And I'm also the director of the Gerber Institute. And so some of you may have come to some Gerber events around Newman at some point or another. But I live in Viola, way on the opposite side of Wichita, southwest of Wichita. You go to St. John's, Clonmel, if you've ever heard of such a distant place. I have Father Lansworth out there, who many of you might know, this time in the diocese. I have, let's see, I've been married for nineteen years with four kids ranging from fourteen to seven, and currently about twenty-one or two chickens, one elderly dog, a lizard, a frog, and a pair of teens. And then other critters probably living in and around our house we don't want there. So that's kind of the rough bio. I also, this might come up as we go through tonight, and then God willing, if somebody were doing the whole sequence, you'll hear, you talk about a whole different set of things. But I was raised Baptist. So I grew up here in Wichita and went to Messiah Baptist Church growing up, which no longer exists under that name. It is now New Spring Church, which is over there on the Northeast Expressway, right next to Magdalen. So, you know, may God have mercy on your soul if you're there on the road when both of those churches let out. So my parents still actually attend that church. My dad's a trustee. So I was raised King James Version, fundamentalist Baptist. So actually, that's going to be kind of relevant. One of the reasons, I think, to learn about St. Augustine is that St. Augustine really is very influential in a lot of Protestant Christianity. So a lot of the Baptists or the other kinds of Bible Church Christians or other fundamentalists that you might talk to are going to be heavily influenced by Augustine's thought via Martin Luther, John Calvin. So that's one of the reasons, I think, it's important to know about St. Augustine. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I entered the church in graduate school when I was in New York in, ooh, all kind of ago, I don't know, 2002, I think it was, Easter vigil. And so moved back here, and here we are. So, that's a little bit about me. And so tonight, we're going to be talking a little bit about Augustine's Confessions. Has anybody ever read The Confessions before? Okay, double books, and then maybe even open bits and pieces? Okay. Well, I think it really is short of the Bible. It would be difficult to find a more significant word, I think, in terms of understanding our faith, because St. Augustine's Confessions really is kind of a pivotal text in understanding St. Augustine. And really, from St. Paul to our own day, I think Augustine, you could argue, I would argue, is really the most influential figure in the development of Western theology. The only other figure I would maybe say, kind of want his par, would be Aquinas, who we'll be getting to later on this spring. So we'll be hitting, in my view, the two biggies over the course of the next few months, so St. Augustine and Aquinas. And The Confessions is really, I think, if you're going to read something by St. Augustine, The Confessions is really kind of a wonderful place to start. Because many of you probably know, even if you haven't read it, this is kind of Augustine's spiritual autobiography. Right? So Augustine writes this when he's still a relatively young man, but after he has made his famous conversion and entry into the church. And he writes it really at a very pivotal moment in his development of his thoughts, which we'll be talking about here in a few minutes. But The Confessions tells kind of the story of this really pivotal figure in Western theology who really shapes a lot of what we still believe and practice as Catholics to this day. It's also just very famous and important as a work of literature, right? I mean, really Augustine invents the genre of the autobiography as we know it. There were people who wrote, you know, Caesar wrote about the wars that he fought in, in Gaul. But it was, that's kind of accounts you get of people's lives prior to that. This kind of idea of a searching, kind of revelatory, spiritual autobiography really is Augustine, who's the one who kind of comes up with that, right? And really everything else, you know, up to, you know, Oprah, kind of building on, right, that foundation in many ways. So it's really, even if you just want to understand Western thought apart from just Catholic doctrine, I think, it's really a crucial book, I think, to be familiar with. So, and basically, there's no way we could really do justice to The Confessions in an hour with a little extra time for Q and A. Right? So really what my goal is to do tonight is to explain Augustine, to explain his thoughts and the context for this book in a way that will make it possible for you to get more out of reading it. Right? So what I'd really encourage you to do is to find a copy of The Confessions, read a copy of The Confessions, because Augustine, and again, it is a monumental piece of world literature, right? So me doing some bullet points on a PowerPoint slide is not really going to give you an authentic understanding or experience of The Confessions. So what I can do is to try to sketch the context for you, so that you can kind of know what's going on in his discussion, in his time, and what he's talking about when he talks about Manicheans, or when he talks about the Platonists, or things like this, right? So that's really what I want to try to do for you tonight.
What year are you talking about?
I'm sorry?
What year are you talking about?
Right around the year 400 is when he writes this. So Augustine had, he lived a very long life, right? So that idea that everybody died when they're thirty-five in the angel world is not true. So he lived till 430. So he had a long life. So he wrote this several decades before he would die. So really, at the end of his life, the monumental work he's working on is The City of God, which is really arguably his second, really, most important work, which is much, much bigger. Now, again, and feel free, so thank you for breaking the ice. As you can probably tell, I am not a very formal lecturer. I very, very much prefer conversation, right? If you wanted to watch a formal lecture, you can do that online with much more famous people than me. So the benefit, so, you know, you got a slum with me, but on the upside, you can stop and ask me questions and stuff, as opposed to some famouser person on YouTube. So, famouser, you speak real good English. Okay. So what I wanted to do, before we get any further, if I can figure out how I unblank this, oh, okay, here we go. So here was our opening prayer. I'll show you where I got that in a minute. But I did want to show you, you know, The Confessions is, again, one of the most famous works ever. So there are four million versions of it. So if you have a translation at home, great. It's not quite this, you know, holy scripture, so any English translation, I think you're going to get the basic idea. But if you were interested in finding a translation of this to read, what I would recommend would be this version here. So there's this publisher called New City Press, and New City Press has undertaken over the past few years a complete modern translation of Augustine. So they basically have translated all of Augustine's works in recent years, and they are very good academically. It's good translations based on good sources and critical editions, but they're also a lot more readable than some of the online free versions that you can find. So if you do want to sit down and read it, I'm going to show you kind of where you can find it online for free, lots of other church fathers. But if you want to sit down and read The Confessions, I would recommend shelling out the ten or twenty bucks to get a modern translation of it, because it's just a lot easier.
When you say translation, are you saying from Italian?
It's written in Latin.
Latin?
So it was written in Latin.
So he was Italian?
He was North Africa.
North Africa?
So, yeah. So he was part of the Roman Empire of his day, but he lived in North Africa, kind of south of Italy across the Mediterranean.
The question, it says volume one there, is how many volumes are there?
Yeah, I think they split theirs into two. It's really not that huge of a work, I don't know why they decided to do it that way, but there you have it.
I think it's, I think they maybe have City of God is volume two or something like that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know.
We have this edition in our bookstore downstairs.
Okay. But again, if you want to read more Augustine, so there's a huge, I mean, Augustine is one of these scholars or one of these figures where, kind of the joke is nobody has ever read all of Augustine. I'm sure somebody has. But there are a million things to read. So he has, if you like reading the Fathers, and Augustine would be a great place to start, the St. Press has a whole series called His Sermons. So he had somebody who transcribed his sermons while he was bishop. And they have a book that's kind of the essential sermon, so it's kind of the highlight reel of his sermons. That would be another very good thing to read if you're interested in reading the Fathers. So, yeah. Okay. So that would be what I would recommend. Now, again, if you are interested, a lot of you are probably familiar with this site, but just in case, if you want to read pretty much any of the Church Fathers for free online, the place I always go is the New Advent website. So if you just Google New Advent, you will find it. And then, I Google New Advent Fathers, they have the old Catholic Encyclopedia on there for free, they have a lot of things. But if you go to their page on the Fathers, it's nice, you get a list of a whole bunch of the Church Fathers, right? So basically, what they did is in nineteenth century in Britain, they did translations of basically all the Church Fathers into English. So what this is, is a, somebody put online that nineteenth-century British translation of the Church Fathers. And so the upside is that it's free, and I like, there are a number of sites that have the same translation for free online. I like the New Advent one, because it's pretty easy to navigate, it reads pretty well. So if you want to look at something before you commit to buying a book, this would be a good place to go and look. But again, as I said, this is kind of nineteenth-century British English, so it's not going to be quite as easy to read if you really want to sit down and read a whole book. So it's a great place to go, look something up. If you want to sit down and really read one of the works of the Church Fathers, I'd recommend getting a modern translation.
It's a fantastic website, New Advent. Unbelievable.
And the Catholic Encyclopedia is very handy there, too. The other thing you just have to keep in mind, though, when you read the Catholic Encyclopedia on the New Advent website, is that it's the 1912 edition. So there are some things that have changed, right? In particular, it's not quite as ecumenically minded when it talks about the Protestants or...
I like the section on Luther, it's pretty good.
Yeah. So the modern Catholic Encyclopedia is a little more reflecting kind of current church attitudes towards other traditions, but again, if you just want to get some basic facts about Catholic history, it's a good source. Any questions about that? I mean, I really want you guys to be able to leave this having some sense of how to actually go around and find these Fathers and start reading them a little bit yourself. So I certainly recommend it. Again, if you look at Augustine, you'll just see on here, this is all Augustine, right? Some of those are quite long, so there is a lot, a lot to read there. And so there's a lot we kind of need to do, so I'm not certain the perfect way to break this up. So I think maybe one way would just be to show you kind of how The Confessions works. And then we'll kind of step back and talk a little bit about Augustine's life and some of the things that are going on in The Confessions. So if you look online, or if you get a print edition of The Confessions, it's broken up into books, right? So instead of, basically, these are chapters. So there's a number of books here, I don't remember off the top of my head, like ten or eleven or something like that, thirteen. So there's thirteen books. And it kind of starts off, as I'll show you here in a minute, he kind of starts off literally at the beginning. So he talks about me in an infant. Of course, he says, "Well, you know, I don't remember this myself, but people have told me that I did this when I was an infant." So he really starts at the beginning, and then he kind of goes through up to his current life span when he's writing this. And you really get, the conversion happens in book eight. So this is where you have this famous conversion in the garden in book eight. So books one through eight is really kind of the biography of that point in his life. Book nine is kind of the little immediate aftermath of his conversion. And then books ten to thirteen are kind of different, right? So if you're reading it through The Confessions, and you're chugging along, and it's interesting, and you get this conversion, and then you get to book ten, and you get this shift, right? So Augustine starts talking about the nature of memory and the nature of time. He talks a lot about the interpretation of Genesis and creation, so it gets much more philosophical. So if it helps you, I will give you official permission to stop reading at book nine, if you are so inclined. Because this stuff is great, but it is really dense. And it still is really a very interesting reflection on time and memory, but it's a very different sort of thing. So I think a lot of people kind of stop at book nine, and that's, that's okay. No need to be ashamed. Or like my wife, I think she has not finished about two of the three thousand books she's read in her life. It's really bad for her to stop. So she would probably be pushed through, but you don't have to do that. All right. So I think I will, as a college professor, I have trouble talking to more than three people without whiteboard. So I think maybe I will transition a little bit here, and we will do a little whiteboard for some of the basics of Augustine's life. So, St. Augustine. The guy we're talking about. Aurelius Augustine. Augustine is the Saint, Saint Augustine of where?
Hippo.
Hippo, right? So Augustine is hippo. And of course, right, if you didn't know where you guessed hippo is, right, well, it's going to be in Africa. I don't know if it's actually related to hippo as an animal. There are no hippos where Augustine is. He's much closer to Italy and in North Africa. So Augustine is born, this is what Wikipedia is ruining our minds, we don't remember dates anymore. But Augustine is born in the late three hundreds, mid, late three hundreds. So he writes The Confessions around, I think, the 397th and 400 is kind of what people think he wrote Confessions. So this is several years after his conversion, but again, he goes on to be a bishop for quite a while after that, writes a great deal after that. So again, he's in, he's in North Africa. But in North Africa, they are part of Western Christianity, right? So today, most of the Christians you think of in Africa, we hear about like the Coptic Christian in Egypt. So they are more part of the Eastern tradition of Christianity. Did you all talk about the East and West?
Not really.
In your previous class?
A little, a little bit, but...
Okay. Well, I mean, we will talk about that more again in upcoming classes, but basically, you know, if this is the Mediterranean, we got Italy here, and, wow, this is a really bad Mediterranean. Greece here, and kind of Turkey here. So here's Rome. This is terrible. But you got Rome here, you got Jerusalem over here. And basically, what happens is that it kind of, the world kind of breaks in half the Christian world, right? And so when I keep talking about Augustine being very influential in Western theology, we're talking about the part of the Christian world from the ancient world that is on the western half of the Mediterranean. And on the western half of the Mediterranean, they are really centered on Rome, and they speak Latin, right? So Augustine writes all of his works in Latin. On the other side of this line, we have Greece and Turkey and the Holy Land and Egypt. There, Christianity happens in Greek, right? And so now, there is, of course, connections, right? They are connected, right? So I think you heard a little about the Council of Nicaea and Athanasius, if you were in the previous semester. So Nicaea is over here in what we call Turkey today, close to Constantinople, but there were representatives from the Latin part of the church that go there. So they are connected. Augustine knows Greek, but he's really shaky in it. He knows a little bit of Greek and particularly doesn't care for it. He talks about that in The Confessions, that he doesn't like learning Greek, didn't like Greek. Other Latin Christians are much more fluent, right? So most famously, St. Jerome is going to be very good in Greek and translates a great deal of work from the Greek-speaking part of the Christian world into the Latin. Really, St. Augustine around the year 400 is kind of the, he's the first really significant theologian in Latin. Now, I guess the only exception to that would be Tertullian, who I guess maybe you talked about a little bit. So Tertullian is a couple centuries before Augustine. So he was important for all the other reasons, coining the term Trinity. So he's the one who came up with the Latin term Trinitas, to begin Trinity from. But really, up until Augustine's day, most of the theology happens over here, and it happens in Greek. So Athanasius, Origen, pretty much everyone up to the times of Augustine are writing in Greek, doing their theology in Greek. So Augustine is really kind of the grandfather of Western Latin theology, and really everything that follows after that in Latin in the West kind of comes out of Augustine, so to speak. So that's one of the reasons why he's so significant, is that in the East, you have lots of important figures, Origen, the Capitocians, Athanasius, Clement Alexander, all these guys. In the West, you don't really have that. And Augustine is really the defining figure in Western Christianity. Now, of course, what happens after Augustine, and we'll talk a little bit about in one of the upcoming classes, is the eastern part of Christianity starts to get hemmed in by the expansion of Islam several centuries after Augustine's time. In the West, they have their crisis a little earlier with the invading barbarians, so my hairy Germanic ancestors kind of come in. But in this part of the world, they convert the invaders, right? The barbarians get converted to Christianity. And so Augustine's version of theology continues to spread through Western Europe and to North America. And in the East, it develops a bit. So that's kind of a Roman overview of early church history. So Augustine is somewhere around here. And so he's in the Latin Western part of the world. So for him, his authority is going to be Rome, the Helots do not, Alavenda or Constantinople or some of these places. Okay. So, let's see, a little bit about Augustine's life to set the stage. He grows up, he's born in this tiny little town in North Africa. And again, you can read this for yourselves, but he's obviously a very gifted student. And so he's born into a middle-classish kind of family, for lack of a better term. His father is kind of a civil servant. His mother, St. Monica, very famously, is obviously a very devout Christian. His father is not Christian, is only baptized on his deathbed. And St. Augustine is not baptized as an infant or a child, which, again, is discussed in the book and is, of course, ends up being very consequential for him. Did you all talk about this, that idea last time, about people putting off baptism? So this was very common at this period in the church. A lot of people would put off baptism until later in life, for a variety of reasons, right? One was that the sacrament of penance or confession hadn't really developed in the way that we have it today. It's there, but it's very different in form. And so if you committed serious sin after baptism, penance was very rigorous, right? So some people, like Tertullian, who you talked about a little bit, he rejected the possibility of penance for serious sin after baptism. So if you committed adultery, say, after you're baptized, Tertullian thinks you're in a lock. Now, obviously, the church, that doesn't become the church tradition, but the penances for serious sins were very rigorous, right? So there was no, you know, forgive me, Father, I've sinned, okay, Hail Marys and our Father, you go on with your life, right? If you commit serious sin after baptism, it's more along the lines of, well, I would like you to kneel outside of the church, you know, during Mass for the remainder of your years. So things, it was very, very rigorous, right? And so, as a result, or in connection with that, many people would put off baptism, right? So there are a number of homilies we have from different Church Fathers addressing this point, saying, "Don't be putting off your baptism," because they would want to sow their wild oats, and then once they got older and they thought they were okay with it, then they would go and get baptized. So you had a lot of homilies from the Church Fathers saying, "You never know, we're going to be crossing the street, and a chariot's going to come by, and, right? And you're going to be out of lock." So Augustine is not baptized as an infant or as a child. Basically, what happens is he maxes out his little local education, so he gets sent to Carthage, which is the biggest town in his region of North Africa. He does excellent studies there. But of course, as you'll read in The Confessions, many of you probably know, during his teen years and late adolescence, he leads a very sinful life, right? So he reflects a lot in The Confessions on this time. So he spends a lot of time in the theater, watching the dramas. He spends a lot of time carousing with a rough crowd. And so he leads what in retrospect is a very sinful life in his eyes. Now, again, I'll let you read it for yourselves. The impression people have is that Augustine is this great Mormonizer prior to his conversion. Maybe? Although if you actually read, when you read The Confessions, he basically had a mistress or a concubine that he had, this one mistress, for pretty much the majority of his adulthood up until his conversion. He probably wouldn't have married her, but it was not, their social classes did not match. She was not a proper social match for him. And so he never marries her. Eventually, his mother forces him to dismiss her after they had a son. So he actually had a son with his mistress, concubine, whatever you want to call her, who actually died when he was a child, I think twelve or so. And so I think Augustine, we have this, you know, it was not like reality television party lifestyle. He certainly wasn't living the Christian lifestyle, and he did struggle with, he wanted to end this nonmarital relationship. He struggles and is unable to do that. But he also wasn't like somebody in the Hollywood expose they read today. So he grows up in North Africa, again, does really well in his studies. He eventually starts to get a little more serious about things. He reads some philosophy, which starts to change his way of thinking about his life. He decides he needs to get a little more focused on growing up and pursuing the truth. And so he falls in with this sect there in North Africa called the Manicheans. So the Manicheans, you'll read the... So the Manicheans, you'll read a lot about in the Confessions. Anybody know anything about the Manicheans?
Yes.
Some white, dark.
White and dark.
Yeah, they're dualists. So Manicheans, this was a, this was a very widespread religion around this time in the ancient world. So the Manicheans started by the guy Manny, who basically took aspects of a bunch of different religions in the ancient world, including Christianity, and kind of makes his own religion. So it has elements of Christianity in it, but it is dualistic. So it has, divides reality into light and dark. And the spiritual side is the good side, the light side, and the physical realm is the dark, evil side. Now, what is the, why are people drawn to dualistic ways of thinking about the world? What's the advantage of dualism in terms of a philosophy or a religion? And we still have this today, right? The yin and the yang, or there's other kinds of spirituality where you have this dualistic. What's the advantage of that?
It gives you some license to uptake a little bit of evil, doesn't it?
It can. And so a lot of dualistic religions, including the Manicheans, they have different levels. So Augustine is only a, you could call it an auditor, right? So there were people who followed this religion, but they weren't completely committed, right? So the real Manicheans were very ascetic. They were very strict in terms of limiting what they ate and their indulgence is anything to do with the body. So the, the kind of, the top tier of the Manicheans are very ascetic. But Augustine is basically kind of this auditor, which means he subscribes to their beliefs, he goes to their services, he follows their teachings, but he does not have that kind of ascetic commitment. And again, as we all know, right, maybe this is the man who famously prayed for it, maybe chased, but not yet. So the Manicheans, right, if, actually if you look at world history, many religions that are like this, they have this kind of structure, because it's really hard to find enough people who are really rigorously ascetic. If your religion requires that, your religion is not gonna grow very much. So basically you need the auditors to pay the offerings to support the people who are really rigorous. So again, what's the, you have this light and dark, right? What's the problem with dualism as a way of thinking about reality? We got this evil half of the universe with an evil deity, the deity Urge, the guy who creates the world, he's usually the bad guy, and you got this light side. What's the problem with that?
Well, I would say the color gray and I'll say long shot silver, is he good or bad? There's, there is justification between the one and not the right one.
Well, right, the real challenge is where these things meet, right? The zone in the middle. So it's, it's the, it's the conflict, right? How, you know, how do you have these two sides that are perfectly evenly matched? And if you do have perfectly evenly matched sides, it's never going to be, there's gonna be just this continual eternal conflict between the two, right? And so ultimately what Augustine is gonna realize is this isn't a very good way of accounting for reality, right? That there needs to be one ultimate source, he comes to realize. The advantage of this is that dualism, if you have light and dark continually battling, it explains very well the existence of evil and suffering in the world, right? Because suffering happens because you have these two opposing sides fighting each other, right? So this is, that is the main thing about Manichaeism that appealed to Augustine, is that it seems to explain why there is evil and suffering in the world, which is conversely the real challenge for people who believe in one ultimate good God. If there is one ultimate good God who's loving and omnipotent, why does he allow evil and suffering in the world, right? That is the big challenge for monotheism. So at this point, in his younger years, he's a Manichaean. Now, again, you can read this in more detail, what eventually happens is he kind of maxes out his career possibilities in North Africa, and so he heads to Rome, right? So Rome is like the big city. He goes to Rome, he teaches some students, and he finds out that college students, darn it, they don't wanna study and they don't pay the bills on time. And so, yeah, right? Thankfully, yes, that's no longer the case anymore. Yeah, I mean, I do it for a living, but it does seem kinda silly to take a nineteen-year-old and start him to study. But what are you gonna do? He goes to Rome, still a Manichaean, but he begins to become disenchanted with the Manicheans, right? He begins to think that this way of thinking about reality doesn't really work. And when he starts asking the Manicheans hard questions, they're not able to answer him on, right? And so basically he starts falling away from the Manicheans. Things don't turn out so well in Rome because those students won't pay the bills. And so what he does is, he moves a little further up into Italy to Milan, right? And Milan is where actually the Imperial Court is, right? So it's no longer in Rome at this point, it is in Milan. Anyone know what else is in Milan when Augustine gets there? Or I guess, who else is in Milan?
Ambrose.
Yeah, so Saint Ambrose is bishop in Milan when Augustine arrives there. And so this is really another pivotal point in his story, right? Because he's realizing that this Manichaean way of looking at the world doesn't really make sense. But he, again, this is a, one of the reasons the story of Saint Augustine and Saint Monica is so popular, is because it is so timeless, right? That you have this young man, very bright, kind of gets a Sunday School account of his faith, and he, he doesn't think it's very sophisticated, right? It seems too simplistic. And he has a lot of trouble reading the Old Testament and these stories of the patriarchs and of Israel. It all seems very kind of crude and simplistic compared to this exciting philosophy that he's learning, these Manicheans with their very ornate system on thinking about the world. And so eventually he comes to realize that this fancy philosophy is really kind of empty. But he's still having trouble accepting the faith as he learned it, right, as a child. And when he gets to Milan and starts listening to Ambrose preach, he hears a way of explaining the faith and a way of explaining the scriptures that makes, is much more compelling to him, right? And so Ambrose is able to explain the Old Testament in particular in a way that makes sense to Augustine, right? And so biblical interpretation is really a crucial step in the process of learning how to interpret the scriptures well with Ambrose. And that kind of is the last big intellectual barrier for him. And so he reaches this point where he's able to accept the Bible, he's able to accept the faith, he wants to be chaste, but he ultimately can't do it, right? He just can't commit to being a Christian. And he doesn't wanna get baptized and not be able to stop sinning, because again, as we talked about, the consequences are very dire. And that's where ultimately he gets to this famous conversion scene in the garden where he's in prayer, he's agonizing over this, and he hears a voice, a voice like a child coming over the garden wall that says, take up and read, right? And so he takes up, so he has a copy of the scriptures there, he opens the scriptures and he reads this passage in Romans where Paul is talking about not in, carousing and drunkenness and all these sinful ways of living, don't live that way, instead live to God. He's convicted by this, it's exactly what he needs to do, and there's no looking back. So he rushes in, he tells his friend, he tells his mother, and then he ultimately gets baptized. And of course, Monica very famously lives to see her son come back to the faith. She actually died pretty shortly thereafter. So they were able to spend a little time together, thankfully, and then she died. And then ultimately Augustine heads back to North Africa. He is going to kind of be a monastic. He has this vision of setting up a community where they're going to think about big ideas in the faith. But he was a unmarried, educated man. If you were an uneducated, highly, if you were a highly educated unmarried man, a highly unmarried man, really unmarried. You didn't want to wander into a town where the bishop was, had either passed or was very old. So basically he gets more or less forcibly conscripted into ordination. And so he ends up, I think he's a poet-Judah for a very brief period and then becomes bishop of Hippo. And Hippo is this tiny little town in North Africa. One of the differences between the ancient faith and ours is you don't portray, you don't move bishops. So even though Augustine was, as a bishop, one of the most famous and influential bishops of his day, he still remained the bishop of this pretty small and significant town for the remainder of his life. Okay, that's the whirlwind story of Augustine's life that you can read in more detail in the Confessions. Do you have any questions?
What else is going on besides Augustine? What's going on in the rest of the, the rest of the world?
That's kind of the next big thing we gotta dive into. Any questions? Again, there's a million details we left out on the life and all of that. Okay. So what is going on in the rest of the world, in the rest of the Christian world that Augustine is dealing with? So three hundreds or so, what's the big news in the Christian world?
Well, the fall of Rome and Constantine.
Well, yes. So I mean, this is a really pivotal century, the end of it. So it's around the year 400 and into the early 400s is when you get the fall, right? Rome is on its decline. So when Augustine dies in 430, the barbarians are literally at the gates, right? So I believe it's the Vandals, who are actually, have Hippo under siege as Augustine dies. Thankfully his secretary and biographer manages, I think, to preserve his library and his works, although they were widely copied. He was very famous and influential even during his life, so. But yeah, so we get the fall of Rome at the end, which is really the subject of the City of God, right? So one of the reasons Augustine writes the City of God is because as Rome is declining, Christianity is growing, right? So one of the arguments that was being made was that we abandoned the pagan gods and now Rome is going to Rome's. So Augustine writes the City of God in large part as a response to that idea, to explain how the City of God and the City of Man actually relate. But Constantine, right, is the crucial figure in the early 300s, right? And so Constantine very famously makes Christianity legal, right? So Constantine doesn't actually make Christianity the official religion of the empire, that happens later under Theodosius. But Constantine converts to Christianity and makes Christianity legal. And of course ultimately, it becomes not just legal, it becomes kind of the preferred religion of the empire, right? So Constantine becomes Christian. If you really wanted to be in the influential circles, the influential circles are becoming Christian. And so you get this kind of radical reversal of fortunes for the church, right? Because immediately prior to Constantine, you have some of the most severe persecutions of the Christians in the ancient world. So again, lots to cover. From Christ to about the year 300, it's not as if every Christian in every town was like systematically rounded up and thrown to the lions. Most of the persecutions were sporadic. It happened in one province when one governor got it under his skin to do this, or there were occasional empire-wide persecutions, but they were usually short-lived. So it's really only right prior to Constantine that things get really serious. I think it's, I wanna say it's Diocletian, one of the emperors right before Constantine has the most severe persecution. Then you get Constantine, and now Christianity is not only legal, but it's kind of like, if you wanna get in with the emperor and his group, you should become a Christian. So what do you think happens with the church attendance? Couple weeks ago, you'd be thrown to the lions. Now, right, the emperor, hey, if you wanna get in with the emperor, become a Christian. So needless to say, the attendance certainly is an upswing, right? And so what you end up having through the mid 300s is this huge surge in the church and huge growth in the church, right? And so this obviously is a very good thing, but it also obviously creates some really big challenges, right? So you have hordes of people entering the church, many of whom are not maybe, certainly not well catatized. Many of them are not the kind of like very earnest converts that you would have been getting a couple decades earlier. So you have a kind of very popular Christianity where people are entering into the church who may or may not be really earnestly committed to this conversion that they are undertaking, right? So this, that's a real problem. So the, so the radical growth of Christianity in the 300s is both a good thing and one of the huge challenges facing the church in that period. So what kind of challenges do you think you're going to get with this?
Heresy.
Well, yeah, so there's gonna be some heresies, there's always heresies. There's going to be a lot of lax Christians, right? A lot of people who are not living very good moral lives. So that's gonna be one challenge. And what do you think you're going to get on the flip side of that? You're gonna get a lot of resentment and very rigorous Christians, right? And so you end up with this tension between all of these people entering the church who may not be that devout, and then you have people who are very upset about these so-called Christians who aren't really practicing their faith seriously. And that is going to grow into, well, a number of different controversies. So we'll talk about this next time, but Pelagius, who's the most important heretic in early Western theology, so he's kind of Augustine's, you know, that's Augustine's joker or arch-nesis, if you will, would be Pelagius. Although initially Augustine heard good things about Pelagius, because Pelagius is in Rome preaching, trying to get people to lead good, serious Christian lives. And then of course they end up kind of fighting it out for several decades after that. So that's one of the challenges. Similar to that is Donatism. So Donatism is one of the big challenges going on in the African church when Augustine is writing the Confessions. So basically what the Donatus are, they are named after a bishop, Donatus, who got into, I mean, it's complicated, but basically there was a big fight about the validity of ordinances. And it was centered on these people known as the Tradatoris. Wanna think a wild guess of what Tradatoris means? Not too hard. Traitors. These are traitors, this is where, right? These are people who, that in Latin literally means that handerovers, the people who handed over the sacred texts, the sacred vessels during the persecutions. And so there were some Christians who did not bravely go to the lions, there were some Christians who handed over the scriptures, handed over the vessels. And when Constantine comes along and makes Christianity legal, these people, many of them, come back into the church, right? And as you might imagine, so if your dad was one of the guys who went bravely to the lions rather than denied his faith, and your next-door neighbor Chuck handed over the sacred texts, and now Chuck shows up in the pew next to you, this creates some conflict, right? And so basically what happens is you get a schism in North Africa. So this Donatism was a North African... So this, Donatism was a North African problem, but it was a huge problem for Augustine. And so you end up with rival churches throughout North Africa. So you have the Donatus churches who refuse to admit these people, refuse to recognize any ordinances that are connected with clergy who were either, who either did this or who permitted these people to come back into the church. And so actually, when Augustine is bishop, there are more Donatists in North Africa than there are Catholics, right? And so over the course of his career as a bishop, he kind of does a lot to turn the tide. But the Donatists are much more numerous in North Africa than the Catholics when Augustine was bishop. So this is one of his real challenges, is how do you deal with this conflict? And this is really a conflict about what do we as a church do with serious sin, right? What do you do with serious sin? In this case, apostasy, right? That's one of his huge challenges as a bishop. Questions about that? Okay. So I would say, if we're trying to figure out, you know, what are the big issues to make sense of in reading The Confessions, knowing that this is going on is very helpful, I think, right? Because one of the things you're going to see over and over again in The Confessions is Augustine's struggle with sin, right? And he has this huge struggle with sin, particularly in his case with sexual sin, right? And what do we do as a result of this, right? And Augustine, through all of this career stuff, he's reading the philosophy. He reads Cicero, he reads the Platonists. He's completely convinced of the value of the spiritual life and the chastity, but it never gives him the ability to actually change, right? And this is a pivotal thing that's going on in The Confessions. He makes this intellectual conversion relatively early on in the story, but he's not able to give up the sinful lifestyle. So what is it that allows him to do that, Mike? Well, it is that voice, right? That voice of God which symbolizes, what is Augustine the doctor of? Augustine's the doctor of grace, right? That he is, for Augustine, right, it is all about grace, right? That this is the key difference between Christianity and philosophy for Augustine, is that God reaches out to him when he's there in the garden. God is the one who reaches out to him and finally gives him the ability to overcome this sin, because he's completely unable to overcome that sin on his own. Even with all of the philosophy, everything he learns, he can't do it. God has to initiate that conversion, right? And that is the fundamental moment in The Confessions and the fundamental key to understanding Augustine's thought, right? Because when Augustine faces the Donatists, right? Augustine does not think that this is no big deal, right? Augustine knows that apostasy is a big deal, right? There is nothing that's a bigger deal than denying your faith. But for Augustine, sin is more going to be the final word, right? That grace can always overcome, right? And the flip side of it is, if you are a holy person, it is not because you didn't, right? It is because God gave you the grace. God is the one who made you holy if you are holy, right? So when Augustine is dealing with these Donatists who think that they are the real holy Christians and they're not like those Catholics who hang out with these sinners, Augustine wants nothing to do with that, right? Because he knows very well, from his own experience, that it is not me or you that does what is good in our Christian lives. It is God giving you the grace. And that is the crucial thing. So when you go through The Confessions, you're going to see, sometimes you kind of feel like, okay, Augustine, I got it, you were sinful. But he talks over and over and over again about how sinful he is. But what he's doing is expressing this radical experience of God's grace that he has had. And he thinks, in our fallen state, prior receiving grace, we cannot do good on our own, right? This is going to be the big thing for him. All right.
Did you quite have a short?
Yeah.
The Donatists, the Christian members, so were they, did they not want to allow even laypeople back? Or was it more of a, they rejected, that they didn't think that the bishops would hand it over? Did they ordain it? Was it, or was it both?
I think they didn't want either.
Okay.
They were rigorous.
Okay.
And it's like a long North African tradition, right? You know, there's stereotypes about different regions. North Africa was always a very rigorous type of Christianity. So this is where you get Tertullian, who was a rigorous, ultimately becomes a heretic. He joins the Montanists because they are more rigorous than the Catholics. And then eventually, he decided the Montanists aren't rigorous enough, so he forms his own sect, right? So and Cyprian, another Latin father, he did a lot of good stuff, but he denies the possibility of forgiveness for serious post-matismal sin. So that's not something from his thought that becomes part of the tradition. So yeah. Any other questions?
At the end of his life, with all of his writings and everything, is there any book that you recommend on how, he had, I think, one for sure, maybe two assistants for better choice of words to work with him. How were all of those papers preserved? Do we know how that, that's heroic if you start to think about it.
Yeah, I mean, his secretary is, was Sidious, I believe is his name? Who wrote a life of Augustine and I think preserved a lot of his works. But Augustine was, you can read this in Augustine's letters later in his life. He knows that the stuff he was writing doesn't just go to the person he sends it to, it gets copied and sent to lots of people. So there was a very robust system kind of in place for copying these works. So Augustine was, his works get preserved, because I think his library survives. And there's actually, this is interesting debate about some of those things too. So there's an argument that there isn't an actual autograph of Augustine, a work that he actually wrote that gets preserved. I'm trying to remember which one it is. But his library survives, but even if his library hasn't survived, I mean, his works are very popular, get copied a lot. Like the whole fight with Pelagius that we'll talk about next time, it starts because Pelagius comes across a copy of one of Augustine's works and says, this doesn't seem right, and writes a book against it, and then Augustine writes a book against him, and things take off from there. Yeah, any other? So I guess we could possibly treat, but I would say, you know, if you want to understand The Confessions, right? This is really, that conversion is really the apex of the whole story. And if you read the whole story and Augustine's thought in general, what you'll see him develop in his theology that we'll talk about next time, all really comes out of that experience, right? This experience of human sinfulness and the fact that God graciously reaches out to us and gives us the ability to break free from that sin and follow it, right? That's really the central thing for him. The other things, high intuitive, right? He, I mean, the study of philosophy is an important part of Augustine's growth, that ability to think about God, not in material terms, to think about, ultimately, it's not dualism that accounts for evil in the world, it's human free will that basically causes evil. So that's important too, this is merging in philosophy. But it's really that experience of God's grace through, because while there are through ambros, but then just kind of through direct divine intervention as well, that really shapes The Confessions.
Well, I've noticed in recent years, that I didn't, I didn't realize until recently, I should say, that a lot of the, a lot of Eastern Christians, even now, just have quite a disdain for Augustine. What's your experience of that or why? And I can see it a little bit with Aquinas, but I don't really get it with Augustine, other than some fact that he's our guy.
Yeah. Yeah, now there are some Eastern Christians who, but yeah, they certainly, some of them don't think he should be considered a father at all. Some of them, like, well, more intelligent than I did once. There are a number of reasons, but the main reason has to do with his understanding of how salvation works and how sin affects us that grows out of, I would say, this experience. And then his fight with Pelagius and also his, one of the things I was going to mention, which I guess we'll get to next time, is right around when he writes The Confessions, this is also when he writes Ossimplicium. So he writes this work called Ossimplicium, which just means two simplition. So there is this kind of mentor figure for him around this time in his life, God, you know, simplition, who writes a series of questions to Augustine to answer. And simplition poses a number of passages for Augustine to interpret, with a particular focus on some key passages in Paul, where Paul talks about, for example, for my grace are you saved through faith? And that out of yourselves is a gift to God, not a works listing, and she boasts, right? So these classic, if you are familiar with Protestant kind of fundamentalism or evangelicals, a lot of the verses that you will get on an evangelical tract are the same ones that Augustine gets asked about by this guy Simplition. And so right around the time he's writing Confessions, Augustine seems to be working out this way of thinking about sin and salvation, which becomes kind of the classic Western way of thinking about it, which is different than the Eastern way of thinking about sin and salvation, right? So in the East, original sin is not as severe. The, they tend to think about salvation more in terms of deification, like Theosis becoming like God. They don't tend to think of it in the more legal terms that Western Christians tend to think of, right? We move from guilt to righteousness, and Eastern Christianity doesn't tend to think of it that way. And Augustine is really the one who makes that shift. And so I think that's the main reason they don't like him. Like the Western idea of original sin, the original sin makes us all guilty in Adam. The East doesn't think about it that way. And Augustine is really the one who makes that development.
So there's a main concept that God's goodwill gives us the grace to overcome sin.
Yeah.
So prior to that, it was that people, individual people, were the ones who were accused of sin, not God's goodwill.
Yeah, it's not.
I mean, that's what, I mean, that's what I grew up with, is God's goodwill gives us the grace. I mean, I took that as a, from day one, that was what, because all of sin was all about. You're saying that's not the way, no, it's true that way.
It's complicated. I mean, so Augustine, this idea that in the East, they would still say, yes, we are sinners, and yes, we need God's grace to attain salvation. But they don't, they don't think of it as kind of these legal categories. And they wouldn't say that we all share in Adam's guilt, the way that Augustine is going to say, right? So for Augustine, you, original sin makes you guilty, and it also very severely corrupts your nature, so that you cannot take the, any sort of an initial step towards God on your own, right? You, you are like literally dead in your sins, right? This is the idea that's really going to get picked up by Luther and Calvin and taken to the next level. But there is a lot of it in Augustine himself, right? So you are literally dead in your sins prior to God giving you special grace to kind of pick you up spiritually speaking. And so, and of course, what Augustine is going to say is that that grace is only given to particular individuals, right? Because once God initiates that process, it is not your will, we'll talk about this more, but in a lot of Augustine, your will is kind of along for the ride, right? That it's really God who's driving things, and you are kind of just along for the ride. Your will only plays a secondary role at best. And when you look around in the world, in Augustine's world, a relatively small number of people seem to have this happening. They get baptized and they persevere in the faith. So the people that don't get baptized and don't persevere in the faith, Augustine is going to include, were not chosen by God to go through this process. So that's where we get this idea of predestination or election. So that's in Augustine. Eastern Christianity does not think about salvation typically in those ways, right? So for them, the fall is less severe. It damages our nature, but not to the extent that Augustine would say it does. And in Eastern Christianity, generally speaking, our will plays a much larger role cooperating with God's grace. I mean, and that's a huge discussion, but in general, the East doesn't like Augustine because he has a much harsher view of original sin, a much more limited understanding of the scope of salvation. And they, Augustine really focuses the conversation a lot more on that transition from being guilty to being righteous. Whereas Eastern Christians think, yeah, you're a sinner, and then you receive grace, and you will ultimately be with God. But they tend to not focus much on that kind of initial change. They really want to talk about, great, you have God's grace, let's talk about how you're becoming more like God, how you're becoming divine. So there's actually, I'll say this now, because I don't know if I get you guys for the next one. But there's this great correspondence that happens between the Eastern Christians and the Lutherans. It's a kind of, the enemy of my enemy is my friend, right? So we both hate the Pope. So the Eastern, there are these Eastern bishops and important folk who start writing these letters to the Lutherans, and they start writing letters back and forth. But eventually, it dies out, because the Eastern Christians are like, okay, stop it. Stop talking about like how salvation happens, we're done, right? We want to talk about like the rest of the faith, and the Lutherans only want to talk about how does a person get saved? And that's kind of the different mindsets that are at work. And that's part of why the Eastern Church doesn't typically care for Augustine.
Is that big of a concept? Do you think the Church of, will ever be reunited?
Um, I, I mean, eventually it will be reunited. In Eschaton and nowhere else. Who knows? I mean, a lot of improbable things have happened over the last 2,000 years, so who am I to say if they couldn't come back together? Certainly, there have been a lot of gestures on kind of the Roman side in recent decades, but it was a lot of history. And we did some not great things as part of that history, and so did they, but I think it'll take a while. We can be hopeful. There's a lot of big issues. And so that way of thinking about salvation is one of the big issues that kind of divides the two. And this, you know, we'll talk, I think the end of our session, we'll talk about the split that happens in 1054 between Rome and Constantinople. But no one has set out to make this divide. It just sort of, over the centuries, if you have one group of people speaking one language and another group of people speaking another language, they just naturally develop in different ways. So they think about the Trinity differently, they think about salvation differently. In the East, they have beards, in the West, they shave. They use lemon bread, we use, and we kind of snicker at that stuff, but all of that stuff does matter too, right? And, you know, it was kind of a big deal when, was it Jaques that let them start growing beards again? You know.
Yeah, I was with a fellow guy who had a beard until, I was with him the day we got to go meet John Paul the second, and he shaved his beard. And I was like, what's going on? And he's like, John Paul, the wistful priest shouldn't have beards.
Yeah. But I mean, again, think, like, the difference between lemon bread and unleavened bread and for the Ugrists is a pretty big, we can get upset about kind of what kind of hymns, you know, happen in our mass. do, you know, happen in our mass, so. Any other thoughts or questions? All right, well, I don't, Dusty said, I'm supposed to go about an hour on the question and answer, so I want, I could pay for for another 1050 minutes, so. If you want to chat about Augustine, I'm happy to do so, but if you want to get home, then.
Thank you, Dusty.